Welcome, everybody. I call this meeting to order. Today's date is May 8th, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been duly posted and a quorum present?
Yes and yes.
Please join, uh, stand and join me in the pledge of, pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Town of Lee bylaws, and town meeting time. I would like to remind everyone of a few procedures before we begin. All registered voters of the Town of Lee will have the right to speak and vote. Each person may once, debate once, and each debate will be limited to five minutes. After all members have spoken, a member may debate, debate a second time. No one may debate more than twice per motion. Debate may be further limited or extended by a two-thirds vote. Members have to be a Lee resident to speak. Members have to be registered with a voter card and a clicker to vote. A person that is not registered, not a registered voter of the Town of Lee will require a majority vote of members to speak. When speaking, please state your full name, address, and please use the microphone so everyone can hear you. All debate must relate to the main motion and be directed through the moderator. Before making any motion or debate, you must be recognized, recognized by the moderator. Votes will take place by voice votes. If the moderator cannot determine the outcome, or if a member calls for a division, remote clickers will be used. Clicker number will change to blue when the vote is cast. Number will turn red for no and green for yes when the vote is closed. In the event of a technical difficulty, a standing vote will be called. Without objection, we will proceed. Tonight, we will be considering, I forgot how many articles, seventeen articles. Article one, do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I will read the following motions, Article one through five, the consent agenda, and if there are no objections, they shall be moved to, to be approved by a single vote. Article one, I move that the town vote to receive the reports of the select board, town accountant, and other officers, boards, commissioners, commissions, and committees of the town. Article two, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries of all elected officials as required by law for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2026, right? Twenty-five? Oh, that's right, twenty-five. Article three, I move that the town vote to authorize the transfer of the sum of $2,829.96 from the sale of the cemetery lots or seats to the Fairmont Perpetual Care Trust Fund. Article four, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board or other town departments with the knowledge of the select board to apply for and accept grants from the federal government, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or any other source to execute any documents in connection with said applications and to expend grant funds for purposes received without further appropriation. Article five, I move that the town vote to expend Chapter 90 sums for fiscal year 2026 as provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to repair and pave the town's roads.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
I, I just want to make one quick recognition. I think she's in the back over here, but on Article one for the town reports, I just wanted to acknowledge Sabrina Tuie, who writes the town reports. Every year, they go to the, the, all of the reports in the state go to the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and our town report for Lee was voted as the number-one town report in Massachusetts, so thank you.
All right, do we have any discussion?
Um, I just had a quick question, um, on number five. Does it need to include, like in the summary, that the amount of money? That's just a simple question.
Do we know?
Yeah, Chapter 90, yeah, we, we won't know the exact amount until the legislature approves it. We get an estimate, so we don't have to do a specific amount in there.
Okay, because I saw it in the summary, so I just didn't know if I had to go.
Yeah, that's, that's what they've told us, until the legislature does the final vote. It's not, yeah, thanks.
All right, seeing no more discussion, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes. Article, Article six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $23,596,068.22 and to transfer from free cash the sum of $700,000 for a total appropriation of $24,296,068.22 for the maintenance of the several departments of the town as published in the 2025 annual town meeting warrant.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no. The ayes have it, motion passes. Article seven.
We have to read them all.
Oh, I'm sorry, see, I have two copies here, sorry.
That would have been the easiest budget we ever discussed.
I'm sorry. For which, I have it. I have one copy that's different from the copy I was given tonight. Article, all right, so we're Article six here, all right. Town buildings. Uh, first, let me read a rule here.
It's general.
I got it. I got it. The articles were different on the one tonight ahead. The summary's different.
It's not written that way.
All right, I'll read, you reach line item, I'll read. Say hold if you would like a particular budget to come up for discussion. And then we'll vote on all the non-held items. And then once we do that, we'll go to the not, uh, the, the, um, held items. We'll vote on that, okay? Moderator, $150. Selectmen, $81,300. Town administrator, $120,235. Finance committee, $500. Reserve fund, $70,000. Compensation reserve, $75,000. Town accountant, $129,481. Assessor, $134,300. Treasurer-collector, $300,665. Town council, $52,350. Information tech, $136,640. Town clerk, $94,173. Election, elections registrars, $20,300. Land use department, $136,350. Conservation committee is zero, planning board is zero, zoning board is zero. Town reports, $3,600. Office equipment, $13,260. Staff development, $4,000. Fire and EMS, $1,300,461.34. What? Thirty-four cents, sorry. Building department, $156,946. Gas inspector, $6,681. Plumbing inspector, $8,548. Weights and measures, $11,216. Electrical inspector, $9,110. Emergency management, $2,250. Animal control, $29,369.31. DPW administrator, $57,000. Highway construction and maintenance, $482,549.30. Snow and ice, $488,221.27. Street lighting, $54,841. Forestry, $47,400. Sanitary landfill, $33,700. Cemetery, $104,014.74. Parks and playgrounds, $32,978.51. Public building, Oral D building, zero. Public building Memorial Hall, $82,191. Board of Health, $76,765. Trittown Lee, $211,597.32. Trittown Lennox, $277,472.12. Trittown Stockbridge, $154,868.16. The Breen Center, $2,867. Community health program, $1,250. Cable advisory committee, $150. Council on Aging, $79,476.82. Lee Youth Association, $66,062. Veteran services, $59,268. Youth commission, $24,320. Lee Library, $336,947. Sandy Beach, $73,653. Historic Commission, $485. War Memorial Flags, $2900. Culture account, Cultural Council, $5,200. Long-term debt, zero. Long-term debt, zero. Short-term debt, $3,100. Berkshire Regional Planning, $5,176.98. Berkshire County Retirement, $1,148,848. Workers' compensation, $128,658. Unemployment benefits, $34,500. Health insurance, $3,541,929. Life insurance, $21,000. Medicare, $209,437. Police medical, $2,033. Liability insurance, $194,000. Other insurance, $64,000. Okay.
So we're moving on or we're coming back?
We do. Get all the way through?
We got all the way through, and there's only two holds.
So we're gonna vote on, what is it, hold, held? Yeah, we're gonna vote on all the non-held items first, so.
The rest of the hold, uh, 292, we don't draw.
292? Yep.
So that would be first.
That one, and the school, we got three holds. Okay, we're gonna vote on all the non-held items, so all those in favor, or, yeah, all those in favor, vote aye.
Whoop, wait, he's asking, there was a question.
Question?
I apologize for not knowing about the protocol.
That's okay.
We're new in town, we moved in last year.
Welcome.
I read as best I could through the synopsis of some of the changes. Would it be possible for you to explain the rationale? There were some very significant increases, and rather than try and decipher the notes, would it be possible, was it, uh, I know there was costs and benefits for a lot of employees, but a couple other, what it seemed to be not employee expenses, there were some significant changes. Would it be possible for you to go through very briefly, explain some of the significant line item changes? Or am I out of order?
Well, I respect the question, I, I would rather, I, I respect the interest. I just don't think we can broadly discuss budget, we have to discuss the held items. Um, if you have a specific question about a line item, feel free to ask, but we would need, I think, need a specific question to one of the line items.
Well, in effect, we know a lot of the items, and I have a feeling the answer to the question would probably be the same on a wide variety of items. So just the nature of some of the significant changes without going through every single line item.
Mr. Town?
Gordon Bailey had it.
Oh, no. Town council.
Does anyone want to try to answer a broad, uh, question about?
Well, I mean, without knowing what they are, but all the towns, I represent nine towns, all the towns have faced, uh, a really substantial increase in insurance costs. Uh, so, those are some of the line items that went up, uh, I'd say, al- almost in an unmanageable rate. So fourteen percent, which is, you know, makes budgets, school budgets, our budget just jump a tremendous amount.
It was also, uh, all of our unions were in, had, um, contracts with new collective bargaining this year, so they were all new contracts for school, police, fire, et cetera, so, um, so those, that was another factor in.
So it's an outflow of events?
Yeah, it was kind of a perfect storm for budget, for municipal budgets this year, so.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I have a question about 693, the cultural council.
Hold on, hold on. We're gonna vote on all the, uh, non-held items first. So all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no.
No. That was a mistake on my part.
The ayes have it.
The Novocain hasn't worked off yet, it's still right there.
Too many tell me.
Now we'll get to some of the held.
All right. Thank you, Gordon.
Yeah, no problem.
The, uh, the first held item is 292, animal control.
Uh, John Cody, 51st Street, Lee. I was just curious why it more than doubled? Or am I missing something?
I have to double-check, I believe we are, the number that we appropriate there is for Lee Ann Lennox, and so they pay us back for the other half, we share an animal control officer. So it may have been, you may have been seeing just Lee's portion. If you're looking at the previous year, so that's what, we have to appropriate the whole amount because they're a Lee employee, and then we get the money back, um, from the Town of Lennox. So I, I believe that's why it would have doubled. I don't know if Jim has anything to add to that? Okay, yeah, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's vote on, um, do we want to vote them all together or separate?
No.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, yeah. All right, all those in favor of 292, animal control, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Next one, next held item is the school budget. Three hundred.
Cornelia Kalisher. Um, I was wondering, um, no, I'm not wondering, I have a statement more. Um, I truly believe in educating our children in the town. I say this every year. Um, I know that there was an effort by the town to reduce what was asked for originally, and that was done. However, we have a very small population attending the school, and it's a very large amount of money to be spent on a very few children, and our tax rate is up. So it's just a, a comment, um, and I want to hear exactly, I ask every year for, for it to be publicly stated, how many children are in the school at this point? Can somebody answer?
Uh, my, Mr. Richard?
632 students in Lee public schools.
Okay, is that, was that the only?
It was just the, I just a comment about it, I have real concern, I keep saying, can we please, and I know you put effort into this, somehow join with other school districts to help our, reduce our taxes. We have a great school and, and great people in this town and children, and I believe in education, I said, but it's a huge amount for a very small population. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Next held item is 692, the war memorial flags.
That's me, too. I just, um, want to say, it's not that I'm against having flags in town, just that last year, I can't, I, I didn't have the time to go back to my last year's warrant, but we spent a huge amount on frag, flags, and I don't know what that, I didn't have time to go back, but I can't, it was a, a large amount, and so I'm wondering why we're needing another amount this year when we bought many flags last year.
Yeah, so I thi- I think there were two last year. There's, there's the ones that go down the streets, which are the large flags, and then there are the cemetery flags. So the 692 war memorial flags are on there every year. Last year, there was an additional capital item to replace the main street flags, so that, that's not on there this year, but the, but the cemetery ones are yearly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article seven. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town.
Hold on, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Jones.
I just wondered if you could introduce people, just because, because there are new people in town. Is that a quality that's?
New people?
In town might want to know who these are.
You want, would you guys want to introduce, or?
Sure. Where we start?
Uh, I'll start. Chris Britton, Town Administrator.
My name is Marilyn Wyatt, I'm on the finance committee and am actually sitting in for our chairman, Sue Kelly.
I just kind of wandered in.
And that's what he does, he just.
Bob Jones, Board of Selectmen.
Sean Renier, Board of Selectmen.
Gordon Bailey, Board of Selectmen.
Hello, Jeremiah Pollard, Town Council.
Thank you, thank you for the suggestion. Okay, Mr. Jones.
Oh, right.
Not, now, 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 we're past that.
I, I should get to the top of that.
Oh, okay, we, I didn't, all right, we had a held item, did we have that?
I heard it, she's gonna try.
Okay, okay, okay. So ma'am, can you come to the microphone? I didn't know we had a held item.
I'm Mary Teresa Valeri, I live on East Street here in Lee. I, I was on the Cultural Council for many years. I, I don't, I just don't understand, the $5,200 are people on the council, the Cultural Council being paid? I assumed it was a volunteer position and that money came from the state that you allocated to artists from the area. Maybe I'm misunderstanding the process, so if you could explain, that would be great.
Do we have somebody? We have, we have someone to answer the question here?
Hi, thanks for the question. Volunteers do not get paid, this fifty. Oh, excuse me, Valerie Blum, Orchard Street. Um, I'm the, was the former treasurer of the LCC until quite recently. Um, that we, several years ago, requested, um, to have a match with the Mass. Cultural Council, um, which at the time was 4,800. And so that meant that we had, like, almost, you know, $9,000 or more to be able to then give to the various people who apply. We have had up to fifty-six different applicants that, for grants.
So the money all goes to grants?
So the man, money all goes to grants.
Okay. Do we want to vote on that, uh, 693?
We don't need to, we already.
Okay, I just want to be clear. Okay, Article seven for the third try, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the following sums of money for capital expenditures of the several departments of the town as follows. Uh, I will be reading them in order, uh, department, uh, project description, and it's all for fiscal year 2026. Town buildings, improvement contingency, $12,500. Town hall, IT upgrades, $37,500. Town clerk, archive, historic records preservation, $5,000. Uh, town clerk, replaced voting machines, $16,000. Police body cameras, $47,600. Fire EMS communications equipment, $27,720. School capital, a pre-bid, this is for roof paving and tennis, $335,000. Sandy Beach for safety and maintenance equipment, $2,000. DPW Highway for extraordinary infrastructure contingency, $12,500. DPW Highway for diagnostic software, $10,000. DPW Highway fleet refurbish, $75,000. DPW Highway air compressor, $25,000. Sewer, extraordinary infrastructure contingency, $12,500. Sewer meter radio replacement, $10,000. Uh, health for Trittown Records, the Lee portion, $5,000. The total is $633,320.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no. The motion passes. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year 2026 budget for the water department. Water operations, $1,216,452. Capital expenditures, $22,500, for a total of $1,238,952. And further, to provide for set appropriations from the following sources of revenue and available funds. User charges, $1,216,452. Retained earnings, $22,500, for a total of $1,238,952.
Second. Mr. Renier, second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year 2026 budget for the wastewater department. Wastewater operations, $2,579,542. And further, to provide for set appropriations and, uh, from the following sources of revenue and available funds. User charges, $2,242,542. Retained earnings, $337,000, for a total of $2,579,542.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Article, uh, Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $490,640 for the following miscellaneous purposes. Uh, fire EMS bond payment, $128,685. A paving bond payment, $150,390. Chamber of Commerce advertising, $86,363. Chamber of Commerce gateway downtown, $14,500. The Laurel Lake Preservation Association, $2,500. Uh, fireworks for Founder's Day, $1,000. Green agers for Fern Cliff, $5,000. And DPW lights. for Founder's Day, $1,000. Greenagers for Fern Cliff, $5,000. And DPW Lights and Truck Telt, $102,202, for a total of $490,640.
Second. Any discussion?
You can all come up and ask questions, too, you know. So Laurel Lake Preservation Association, now that the dam has been sold, usually this was a drawdown, money towards a drawdown. Will that still be done? Can that be done?
Yes, I believe the, so I actually have a letter from the association, and they do discuss doing the work to propose a drawdown to the process. The association does a lot of the studies to determine the, how far down they will do the drawdown and so forth. The dam owner has to initiate the process, and then it requires approval from both Lee and Lennox Conservation Commission. So I don't see any change. I don't think the new owner has any objections to continuing that, and there will be a representative from both the Town of Lee and the Town of Lennox, and land use departments on the board of that dam. It's set up as a nonprofit, so that Board of Directors will have people from Lee and Lennox Departments on there to make that recommendation, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no.
Makes it easier.
The motion passes unanimously. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee, CPC, on the fiscal 2026 Community Preservation Budget and to appropriate or reserve for later appropriation monies from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues or available funds for the administrative expenses of the CPC, the payment of debt service, the undertaking of CPC projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the year, as follows. Proposed fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Budget recommends that the following amounts be appropriated for, or reserved from fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation Fund revenues, unless otherwise specified for fiscal year 2026 Community Preservation purposes, with each item considered a separate appropriation. Balance-held and CPA reserve funds, less encumbrances, is $237,271. FY twenty-five estimated, is that twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Okay, FY twenty-six estimated revenue, Town of Lee surcharge, $165,000. State matching funds, $26,235, for a total 2026 estimated revenue of $191,235. Project appropriations, Youth Commission, outdoor basketball courts, $51,250. Lee Community Gardens, $14,000. Historical headstone repairs, $24,000. Stockbridge Road Property Invasives Trail Design, $15,000. Central Fire Station Reuse Design, $15,000. Southeast Cemetery, $21,000. History of Lee Phase Two Historical Commission, $17,000. Historical Commission Asset Survey, $16,000. Land purchase, Lee Street Canoe Takeout, $100,000. Total project appropriations, $273,250. Administrative funds of 5%, $9,561.75. Anticipated transfer to a housing reserve, $19,123,050. Anticipated new balance held in reserve funds is $126,570.75. And, to enable the Town of Lee to acquire for conservation purposes under Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the deed to the town of simple fee interest or less of a parcel of land on 1235 Pleasant Street, consisting of 4.2 plus or minus acres of open land, identified as parcel 150/029.0000-0090.0, recorded at the Middle Berkshire Registry of Deeds and the records of the town assessors. A map being unfiled with the town clerk. And, okay, together with all rights and easements, and subject to all easements, said land to be managed by the Town of Lee, and that to meet the appropriation, the sum of $100,000 be transferred from the Undesignated Community Preservation Fund and/or Open Space Recreation Fund balance, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit on behalf of the town any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the United States, or the Self-Help Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 132A, Section 11, and/or any other state or federal programs, including those in aid of conservation land acquisition, and/or any others in any way connected with the scope of this article. Said gifts or grants to be deposited in the Undesignated Community Preservation Fund balance, and that the Board of Selectmen be directed to grant a perpetual conservation restriction in said parcel of land, meeting the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 12, and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33, and to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary to effect said purchase. Said funds to be expended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second. Any further discussion? Yes, please come to the mic.
Yeah.
Bob, you second, is that all right? Oh, you, you edit.
Hello, my name is Patricia Martin, 171 West Park Street, Lee, and I'm wondering about the parcel of land that is on Pleasant Street, how that was chosen. I have canoed down the Housatonic River, and I actually fell out of the canoe around that point. So it's sort of, but I, but it might have saved me from going over the, the dam. That's not too far south of that. Of course, the river flows that way to the dam. It's very close, actually. So I was kind of interested in why that parcel of land was chosen, and whether it was considered to perhaps get a parcel of land further north on the Housatonic, where you could have a nice gentle flow through the center of town, et cetera. So, can anybody comment on that?
Mr. Town Administrator?
Yeah, so that, what was basically selected, one, because it was for sale, and it's one of the, you know, the only parcels for sale right now in that area that was a suitable price and location for a takeout. The other factor with this is that Massachusetts Fish and Wildlife also looked at the area and recommended that, and it's going to, it's offered to grant the other half of this, the total purchase is $210,000. There's a $10,000 donation. There is $100,000 for Mass. Fish and Wildlife, and then they came to, the applicant came to CPA for the other hundred. So the town will own the property. It also, one other good part about this spot that was selected is it's adjacent to other town property, which is our DPW. So the state is going to pay for the parking, the access to put the trail in, whatever else is needed. They'll have a conservation restriction, and then it'll be turned over as town property. I believe, as far as other things, Narayan was the applicant. If you want to say anything else to this election, if you want to come up, Narayan.
Good evening. Narayan Schroeder, I live in West Stockbridge. What I would say is that that parcel actually does have a nice gravel bank, where you can step out of a canoe or a kayak on, on a very easy spot to get out, unlike the, about a couple hundred yards down, where, where the takeout used to be at the old HVA office. Was a steep, muddy bank and very challenging to get out there, but this does actually have a very nice place to get out. So it does make a good get out, a good takeout, and Chris covered the rest of it, unless there are other questions.
Thank you.
Well, then, one more question. Is it possible to consider, maybe for the future, to have another point further north on the Housatonic, so that you can put the boat in and-
Yeah, and there's, at the athletic field, you can put in there. That's right in the center of town, and-
Super.
There was one in Lennox. I mean, it's not ours, but-
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further?
Just a quick technical question. I approve of this, but is it, should it read "conservation restriction in perpetuity"? Isn't that the technical language?
Counsel, did you have any? Can you, can you speak, Cornelia, into the mic a little louder, so we all can hear? I couldn't hear.
Question is, is technically, should it be "conservation restriction in perpetuity" versus perpetual conservation restriction?
The same thing.
I think that, in my past, having worked on a project in Lee, I think the technical term is, but I'm-
It will be a perpetual conservation restriction.
It won't?
It will be.
Okay, if you can just check into that to make sure that it's the correct wording. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no. Motion passes unanimously. Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $549,724 from the General Stabilization Fund and appropriate said amount to pay the fiscal year 26 Public Safety Bond payment.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes with two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the proposed general bylaw for tax title payment plans as published in the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no. The motion passes unanimously. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $21,534, and the total sum of $179,453, for the wastewater treatment plant asset management plan project, which was submitted to the Massachusetts Clean Water State Revolving Fund, SRF, Asset Management Planning Project List, and awarded. The total project cost of $179,453 is comprised of a $107,0672 grant, which the town will be reimbursed for through the project, through the project by Mass. DEP and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The balance of the project will be comprised of in-kind services, non-cash, provided by the town, valued at $50,247, and the free cash contribution from the town of $21,534.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, seeing none, excuse me, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Article fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-14.1, terms defined by adding underlying text and removing strikeout text as posted in the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Donovan has already joined us.
We're already here. Here comes the screeching hump. It's going way too fast. Let's go. Buck Donovan, Lander Road, also Chair of the Planning Board, like to report that the Planning Board voted unanimously on this article.
In favor or?
In favor, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Almost missed it by that much.
Any, any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes with two-thirds vote. Article sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-4.5, accessory dwelling units, by adding underlying text and removing strikeout text as posted at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I'd like to report that the Board voted unanimously in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no. Motion passes unanimously, or with two-thirds vote. Article seventeen.
Mine. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-19.3, short-term rentals, by adding the underlying text and removing strikeout text as posted in the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second. Any further, any discussion? Mr. Blum is at the mic.
Good evening, Peter Blum, Orchard Street. I'm a member of the Planning Board. The Chair recused himself from this, so I acted as Chair for the consideration. The short-term rental bylaw has passed and been amended already once, but in the meantime, the state has made some decisions about clarifying the interaction with, with other services such as health and fire. And the town will be buying software to implement the new registration requirement, which we hope is not unduly burdensome. The town officials met under the chairing of the new town planner, Brooke Healy, and they made some additional suggestions for clarification. The biggest change here is the addition of a new requirement that when the short-term rental owner is not in the building, that the already required property manager must, in this new requirement, must live within 30 miles of the short-term rental. The idea is to get the person there and with some dispatch if there's an emergency. The report, my report is that the Board voted favorably unanimously for adoption of this change.
Thank you, Mr. Blum. Any discussion? Cornelia?
So, yes, Cornelia Kalisher, I just want to say that I appreciate the Planning Board and all your work on Article 15, 16, and 17. It's a lot of work over the last few town meetings that we've had. However, reading it through very carefully, it's a lot of changes back and forth from meeting to meeting, and I hope people know what we're voting for again. I'm either/or on this one, in terms of what it's saying is, as far as I understand it, is that if you have an accessory dwelling, I think, on your property, you now cannot do short-term rental in it, whereas before you could. Is that correct?
That was the previous article.
That was the previous article, okay. It's, it's a lot of information. I read it carefully. It's just, I hope we aren't changing it again next town meeting, and we know what we're really voting for on all of these. Thank you.
I think she was talking about the last article, so do you want to add to this article?
There's an interaction between these two with regard to the accessory dwelling units and the short-term rentals, and we, she's right, we did change it, and now we're changing it again. What happened in the meantime was that we changed, we liberalized our regulations with regard to two-family houses, and that changed when people could, what people could do if they wished to have an apartment in their building. Previously, it was very complicated. It's a little less complicated now. If you want to have an apartment in your building, you can make it an ADU, or you can make it a two-family, and there's no longer any difference about setbacks or anything like that. So if you want, if you want to have an ADU, you can't later use it as a short-term rental, but you can easily avoid that by calling it a two-family house.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, oh, sorry, we got, did someone raise their?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did.
Sure. Just state, just state your name, please, your address.
Rock Hinesman, 121 High Street.
Thank you.
Again, kudos to all the work that was done on this. The annual registration fee shall be set by the Select Board to, to annually register your short-term rental.
Mm-hmm.
Just, what's the, what's your thinking on that?
Right now, it hasn't been determined, we'll have it at a meeting, but almost all fees in town are set by the Select, where the Select, the Select Board is the fee-setting Board?
No, I, no, I totally get that, I respect that, I just wonder, is it gonna be $100? Oh, that's, well, right now...
Yeah, so it was posted as $100, it's, I believe it's, unless the Board has other ideas, it was gonna stay that way. The problem is when we put those into a bylaws, a set amount, you know, 20 years from now, we're still charging the same amount, and the software to run these has gone up, it makes it more difficult to adjust those numbers. So as consistency, we put it all to the Select Board, so they'll, in a public meeting, discuss changes, but the proposal, the recommendation, I believe, in the town planner is nodding yes, is gonna be to start at $100, which, which covers the cost of the registration process.
Thank you, very sensible, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes with two-thirds vote. That brings us to the end of the meeting, but before we all go, a couple announcements. Yes. First, I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for all their work. I'd like to remind everybody to vote on Monday, and the last announcement we have is on Saturday, May 10th at 11:00 a.m., there'll be a dedication ceremony in honor of Coach and Teacher Richard Lenfest. The field on Maple Street will be named Richard Lenfest Field. In case of the rain, the ceremony will be here. Obviously, if it's not raining, it'll be at the field. So I think this is a great dedication, long overdue and well-deserved, so I hope if you get a chance to make it, come out and, and honor a great person who gave a lot of great advice to a lot of kids through the years. So, thank you very much, I will, yes, I want to entertain a motion to dissolve.
Motion to dissolve.
Second. Second, all right, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Meeting dissolved, thank you.